Right, so it is our October twenty fourth Planning Board meeting and. We've got a really short but terrific agenda tonight to open our discussion about. A proposed multifamily zoning overlay district. I would like to call our meeting to order for starters, knowing that Bill Spalding may be a minute late, but I know we've got a quorum. So, Jim Hogan.
Here.
Matt Lowery.
Yeah.
Kevin York.
Here.
And myself, Theon Knoll here. Nice to have our Community Economic Development Director, Aaron Kokinda and. Our most esteemed clerk Susan Ald with us as well. I want to invite everybody and thank you for joining our meeting tonight. Our agenda is simple. I want to do some Planning Board housekeeping, then open the public discussion. I do want to point everybody to our webpage for the Planning Board and the Working Group. And also to ask you to take a look at the notes at the bottom of our agenda, which identifies our key priorities. For the board, and this is terrific. A lot of people are are calling in and that is fantastic. Our second item on our agenda is to approve the minutes from our October seventeenth meeting. Had, does anybody have any comments? All right, without any comments, is there a motion to approve?
I make the motion to approve the October seventeenth.
Thank you, Matt.
Second.
All right, thank you, Jim, and all in favor. Kevin?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And myself, yes, so four, four to zero. All right, let's. Do we have Bill yet? I can't tell. Doesn't look that way.
I don't believe we do.
Okay. Other, other things of note going on in Wakefield, town meeting is November eighteenth. And I hope everyone will will attend. We also have a Wakefield one oh one event. For, for new, new residents of Wakefield, November second, I think. And Bill Spalding, thank you for joining. It's great to see you. I hope Senior Night went well.
Thanks, yeah, left the field. It was one one. They were tied, so.
Oh, no. All right, all right. Okay. The, so just a couple of other housekeeping items. Other priorities for the board are the master plan, which is still underway. And we really do appreciate everyone's continuing participation in that, the bike ped plan that. Aaron and Bill have been working on. We are revising our subdivision rules. And subdivision control rules and regulations. And we're trying to put the finishing touches on that. And Wakefield is undergoing a zoning bylaw review. With a commission being led by Dan Lieber, Kevin and myself are representing the Planning Board on that as. And so we really do hope everyone clues into that work as well.
Mister Chair, may I ask you, the zoning recodification, for those who aren't as familiar with it, can you explain what, when you say bylaw review? What that actually entails, just so people understand the limited scope of that effort?
That's right. We are reviewing the existing bylaw, trying to update it. And streamline it where possible to make it a lot more accessible and up to date. So not. Yeah, that's, there's not a lot of wholesale, new. New things being proposed. In order to do that, you would, we would want to go through an entire public process. With, you know, public hearings through the Planning Board, et cetera, and then bringing formal changes to the, to town meeting. All right, I think we are at the seven oh five mark. So I would like to. Move us to our third agenda item, which is to open our public discussion around the proposed multifamily zoning overlay district. Really, for starters, I want to thank everyone for taking the time tonight, all of our neighbors and town members for. Participating in this discussion, both now and in the future. We're really looking forward to a productive conversation about the overlay and what it means for Wakefield. And just real quick, housekeeping, it's important to hear from everyone. And so when you do speak, please state your name and your address. And if possible, please turn your camera on. We want to make sure everybody gets a chance to speak and. And we'll circle back through, just to make sure that. No, no point is left missed, so. Really welcome everyone's participation tonight, and let me turn this over to Jim to lead our discussion. So thank you, Jim and Aaron and Matt.
And Thea, before you hop off, can you see my, the presentation up on the screen?
Yes, I can.
Yeah, thank you. So everyone, my name is Jim Hogan. I'm the Vice Chair of the Planning Board. As well as the Chairperson for the Working Group that's been convened by the town, which has members of the Planning Board. The Town Council, ZBA, Environmental Sustainability Committee, and has town staff and members as well. The Working Group Committee was commenced to, we'll get in further in the presentation, but to evaluate. And develop a proposed multifamily district to address some, some requirements that have come down from the state. The intent for today's discussion is to present what has been developed to date as an initial proposed multifamily zoning district. And to solicit feedback from the public. As we go through this, again, I'd ask everyone to, you know, state your name, turn on your camera when you go to propose or to speak on it. So getting into the proposed multifamily district, what, what is this? So this is a proposed district to comply with state zoning requirements that were passed as part of section three A of Mass General Law. A proposed multi-district, multifamily zoning district will be centered around the Wakefield Commuter Rail Station. It allows as of right developments for up to three stories with a maximum of four units per lot. And the proposed district is going to, is as currently proposed, excludes commercial corridors along North Ave, Main Street and Alpine Street. And the thought process behind that is to protect Wakefield's commercial footprint. The existing permitting process today in place, you can see there's a flowchart on here to your right. Some of the terms that we're going to be talking about more subsequently. As of right, that means a development may proceed without requiring a special permit, a variance or zoning amendment, or other discretionary zoning approval. The discretionary being the keyword. That you don't need to have a discretionary special permit, which is a discretionary permit that allows the development to proceed. Or other types of things. It allows the developer to proceed, quote, as of right. In the context that we're going to be talking today, multifamily means three units or more, although. In the context of the district that we're proposing, it's going to be up to four. This zoning dis, this requirement from the state, this section three A, what happens if we elect to not comply as a community? The state, when this requirement was first identified in twenty twenty, identified three different programs. The Housing Choice Initiative, the Local Capital Project Fund, Mass Work Infrastructure. That any non-compliant community would not be eligible for. Wakefield in the past three years received, you know, three and a half million dollars from these programs. Additionally, I understand, talking to Wakefield, I don't know if it's fully public, but we have another approximately half a million dollars, maybe a little bit more. That are currently in some form of approval between the state and Wakefield today. Additionally, as we're getting closer to some of these compliance deadlines, the state earlier this year announced an additional fourteen programs. That are added to the list that non-compliance and non-compliant towns and communities are no longer eligible to receive if you're not in compliance with this law. Additionally, and more nebulously, the Attorney General has threatened, quote, legal action against non-compliant communities. So while there's not a defined impact, there would likely be something coming out of a community that is not compliant. And be sued by the state. From our understanding, watching other communities who have not been in compliance with interim deadlines. The state's taking this very seriously and is starting to move against those communities that are not compliant. And threatening those funding sources that have been identified to date. So what are we actually being required to do? The state law mandates that Wakefield pass a multifamily district with a unit capacity of sixteen ninety six units. Over approximately one hundred and fourteen acres minimum. It has to support a gross density of fifteen units per acre, which is very important for some of the policy considerations that the Working Group made. The district has to be within a half a mile of, for our case, either the Wakefield Commuter Rail Stop or Greenwood, because they're trying to encourage. Housing to be built near MBTA facilities in order to encourage transit-oriented development and use of the MBTA system. District cannot have age restrictions and has to be suitable for families or children, i.e. you can't make it so only studios are allowed. In the context, as a reminder, for this multifamily district, buildings have to be designed for three plus dwellings per the state law. So where, where does Wakefield stand today prior to this requirement from the state? We don't have any, Wakefield currently has no zoning district allowed or multifamily, three units plus are allowed as of right. We do have districts where two units are allowed as of right. And we, you know, kind of more centered around our general residence, mixed-use neighborhood business and business districts. And we do have a number of other mechanisms where larger developments can be reviewed and approved with discretionary permitting. I E. special permits. So what is the actual proposal we're talking about? You can see on the map here, in the blue, that is the district that the Working Group has identified and is proposing as the basis. And we're looking for feedback from the community on. You'll notice that there are kind of five different segments because they're cut up in between, where excluded parcels along north. Albean and Main, again, we're trying to preserve that commercial character, and it's located. Kind of around the Wakefield Junction area, as well as on either side of Main Street. We'll come back in the map on this later, but just to kind of reference, I know this is maybe a little difficult to see. But this map right here is showing our existing zoning, the red being our business district, purple industrial. The kind of yellowish shade is our general residence, where two families are allowed as of right, and white is our single-family zoning. The dash blue line is the proposed zoning district overlay to the existing zoning. So you'll see there's a lot of overlap with our current business districts and our general residence, where you can build a two-family as of right today. Some of the dimensional requirements. The proposed multifamily district would allow, if all the parcels theoretically, for whatever reason, there were no houses on them. It would allow up to two thousand three hundred and fifty-five units as of right. Right now, today, in that district, sixteen, oh, sorry, the requirements from the state law are sixteen ninety-six. And as opposed to that twenty-three hundred, and then that allows for a usable acres allowable units per acre, sixteen point three units per acre. In lieu of the fifteen minimum from the state. Proposed multifamily district compared to the existing mixed-use zoning that we have on the books in Wakefield today. Four units as of right, we don't have as of right up to that, that high, but it matches the three stories, the thirty-five feet. And then the parking spaces are materially consistent with the existing zoning we have for mixed-use zoning in Wakefield today. So from a context perspective, you know, what does this look like? These are some units that exist in Wakefield today, in and around the multifamily district. You know, on, there's a four unit on Pleasant Street, a four unit on Richardson Ave, and these are kind of what it looks like. Some more examples on Wakefield Ave and on Avon Street with a three unit and a four unit parcel. And so what would this actually result if we pass this district? It's likely that developments such as this development on Chestnut Street that was completed in twenty twenty-two. Was a three unit on an approximately seven thousand square foot lot. You can see it, you know, three stories with three units. You know, we think that it's likely that these are the types of units that we would, developments that we would see if this district got passed. That would be easier for, for them to get permitted. So, you know, where, you know, these units I threw up on the screen, it's all well and good to show that, show a couple of units, but where do they actually exist in town? And you can see they exist, you know, there are existing units that are similar and that, what we think they're going to be developed in town in this district today. Is it a majority? I would say no, but they do exist. If you look at our townwide development context, we have approximately a little over eleven thousand housing units in the, in the town per our last census. And the current housing units in the district that we're proposing is sixteen forty-one, so it's not that far off of what the minimum. For the multifamily overlay district would be, but again, we're about two hundred and thirty, two thousand three hundred and fifty-five units. Capacity, if you had all of these lots built out to the maximum of four as of right. So the proposed district would allow an additional seven hundred and fourteen units as of right above the current building stock. Which represents about six percent of the total housing stock. And then also for reference, you know, this district represents about three percent of the land in Wakefield overall as a town. So why are, why are we even talking about this? From the statewide perspective, the reason why this three A law pat was passed was that Massachusetts has a acute and getting worse. Housing crisis. It's estimated that there's an approximately two hundred thousand unit housing shortage in Massachusetts. And the state is looking to pass this law and have municipalities all around the Commonwealth, not just Wakefield. But any place that's serviced or adjacent to the MBTA, rapid transit or commuter rails are being impacted by this law. And the goal is that enough new housing is allowed via these zoning that development will pick up. In a manner such that towns have the ability to make different choices where they want to cite this additional zoning capacity. And will eventually lead to more houses being built across the Commonwealth to address this housing shortage. Specifically for Wakefield, the reason why we, as the Working Group, when we convened to try to figure out how we would comply with this law, chose what we did. We wanted to center it around the business district in order to make it so, if we were going to have our density. And our, some growth in the town, we wanted to make sure it was around the business district so we could increase foot traffic and help that businesses downtown. Be able to, you know, have foot traffic that people could patronize their businesses. We wanted to make sure that we increased housing, if we're going to increase housing options in town, we thought it was appropriate to do it near quality transit options. Via the commuter rail, which is located, you can see by the Wakefield, Wakefield Station. Or there's really good bus routes along Main Street as well. So we thought that having around the central business district and straddling in between those, those, call it transit corridors. Would be a good public policy perspective. Additionally, we thought it would be good because we're going to be increasing the housing options in the town. I think everyone here has experienced or has seen how there is a limited supply. Both in Wakefield and again statewide. So that's one of, some of the reasons why we thought it would make sense, this district that we're proposing. The other thing is that we are trying to keep the commercial streets commercial. We do not want Main Street, Albion or, or north. To be cannibalized by four unit as of right multifamily housing, and that's why we went to great pains to exclude those. Those, so we were building housing near where the businesses were, but weren't displacing the businesses that we want to have on those front, frontage on those streets. So when the Working Group looked at this, we thought this was a good way to have a series of neighborhoods that already have some multifamily housing. Have a little bit more, we'll work, I call it gentle density, we're raising it, you know, a lot of these. There's a lot of houses that already have three stories, so we thought keeping three stories as a maximum would be appropriate. And we're really talking about the maximum number of units going up from two, most of this area up to four. So in terms of the implementation schedule that we're talking about, you can see this topic first was presented to Town Council back in April twenty twenty-two. We had a series of question and answer sessions in late twenty twenty-two and early twenty twenty-three at the Planning Board. Planning Board made a presentation to Town Council and we convened a, this Working Group that is in the process, has developed this map. That we're presenting to everyone right now, and we're going to start a series of public forums, solicit feedback. Make, and make any revisions while Working Group is finalizing some of the, the written bylaw. Itself that we need to finalize to, in order to be able to set since the state. We do anticipate that we're going to be bringing this to town meeting in April. And we have to be compliant, as I mentioned, the whole non-compliance of, of different towns and communities. We have to pass this by the end of twenty twenty-four, otherwise we will not be in compliance with the state law. And therefore subject to all the penalties that were laid out earlier. So in summary, town leadership ha, has communicated very clearly to the Planning Board and to the Working Group. That they intend to comply at a minimum with the state, the, the three A law. And the multifamily district of some kind will be presented to town meeting to let the citizens of Wakefield. Decide what we want to do with, with this requirement. So the specific district that we're talking about, the multifamily district they're proposing is in full compliance with the state zoning law. They will maintain Wakefield's eligibility for state, state grants and provides competitive advantages against other communities when they're applying for those grants. It provides opportunity for Wakefield to help local and regional housing needs. Ride in, in increase in housing options for Wakefield residents. We're centering the growth of the town on the business district in order to help support our local downtown businesses by increasing foot traffic. So with that being said, if anyone wants to know, know any additional information. There, we have a website and you can find the S Q R code from this presentation that will route, route you to the. Planning Board's website. And more than happy to take any questions or concerns from anyone. Again, as a reminder, please state your name, turn your camera on if possible. And, you know, I would encourage people, some of the things that we're looking for feedback on are this actual, the actual geometry of the, the map. Where we made some of these choices, where to include or where not to include. And then one of the things that we've heard some, some mixed feedback on as it relates to one of the proposals is. This district proposing providing one and a half. Car spaces per unit. We've heard some feedback that that may or may not be the right number. It's matches what we have in the existing zoning on the books. Some people we've heard think that that's too high, so be interested in getting some feedback from folks who are on the call as it relates to if that's. Something that they agree with or disagree with. We're still trying to nail down that as some of the feedback from various people that we've been talking to. Around town. So with that being said, feel free to raise your hand and I'll start. I think Tom Miller raised your hand, so please turn on your camera and state your address and then feel free to give us your feedback.
Sure, I'm Tom Miller and this is my wife, Carlana. We live at Eighteen Park Avenue on the west side. And I'm, I have three basic comments. One, while I'm generally supportive of this idea of complying. I, I think it's important for us to remember the reason we're actually doing this rather than the reasons you listed, Jim. The actual reason we're doing this is because we're being told by the state to. Right, so you said it's to increase housing, et cetera. We could do this on our own, and this relates to my, my second point. So I do agree with the, the idea of this zone, perhaps where it's placed. I generally agree with that. What I don't agree with is extending the number of units in the acreage. Beyond the minimum requirement, the reason for that is we need to maintain flexibility in the future. As we make different decisions as our local community. Where to put additional, how to zone that additional space. We could always go back and zone it exactly the way we're doing this, but we lose that flexibility. And I think that's important because conditions change. We didn't know about this five years ago. There'll be something else we don't know about. In five years and things will change, so I think going beyond the minimum is, is a mistake. And I, I don't support that. I do support meeting these requirements with the minimum. And then my final comment is, I want to thank the board. Obviously, this is a lot of hard work. And thanks for your time and taking this question, but from my perspective. The issue of increasing the number of units, which relates directly to the parking. Right, cars are a big problem. Having taken public transportation in Wakefield for over a decade, it's not the glowing. Transit system that we would love to have, bringing several thousand more people in and expecting them to exclusively use that isn't reasonable. So while I think the number of units of parking per unit may be reasonable. Those are going to be more cars on the road. We need to think about the quality of life of Wakefield and the environment of all that paving. The environmental impact of all that paving that's going to have, because while there are setbacks, we're still paving space that would be grass. Thank you for your time and thank you for taking the question.
Thank you, Tom. And, and I absolutely hear you, and I, I think one of my colleagues joked that we should have, we should have started this with a five minute. Open up for everyone to talk about how they don't love what the states, how they're, how they're dictating this. But, you know, I think that point taken on all your other comments, so thank you very much. I see someone with the name Brandon, who's raised their hand, if you would. Oh, there you go, on your camera and just state your address before you start.
Hello, this is Brandon LaRosa, Tudon Lane, so similar to what the other gentleman said. You know, I just, my big concern really is kind of the going over the state minimum. You know, I support, like, like I think for the intent of the law, having it around the train station, everything will be helpful. Cutting down on traffic, supporting those local businesses in that area. I don't know, have it all in Church Street and all the way to Pleasant Street, kind of meets that. My concern would be the additional traffic, in addition, just kind of changing the character of those areas. So, you know, and then I, I also wonder how it would impact forty B if we add additional units. Like well above the, you know, well above the minimum, so I, I think in general, I'm supportive of the housing in the downtown. I just don't think we should do it with the amount that's proposed with this plan here.
Okay, any other comments or is that, that everything?
Yeah, I mean, I think that was like my main point was just like, I would just be curious too. I guess my other question was, is there any way to write the zoning? You had mentioned the business piece. We didn't want to impact those and change them to multifamily housing. Is there any flexibility in the law to write the zoning so that way you could build the multifamily housing on top of commercial districts?
Without getting into a bunch of nuance and weeds, essentially, you cannot force it. With the way that we're constructing the zoning that we're doing. It, you end up getting into a far more complicated zoning requirement, and you have to prove to the state that you can do it essentially. And when we, as we looked at it, it didn't seem, it seemed like a more straightforward. Element to exclude the commercial lots and then use our existing zoning that we have. To permit lots that front those commercial corridors. Which do have special permits that are discretionary in nature, so that if anything comes up that we think is, you know, grossly too large. The ZBA has the ability to deny a permit.
Mm-hmm, okay. Yeah, I was just curious to the commercial piece, because to me, like, a, a very healthy district has those commercial buildings, but then also has the residences up top. Similar to how Reading does a lot of kind of their development.
I think, and I think frankly, the intent would be to have that type of development continue, similar to like the Tono Building. But under the existing zoning that we have on the books and not make it as of right. And then I would, one other thing that you mentioned that I think. Would be interest, or would be, is good to highlight is, you know, I think I've heard people are generally supportive of where we've cited this around Wakefield Station. And one of the things I didn't get into in the presentation, but we did not locate it around Greenwood, because the way the law is written. If we tried to do the same as of right approach that we're doing in Wakefield Junction. That density, we get to allow six units as of right, which we did not feel was consistent with the character of Greenwood. Because the existing lots are larger than the ones that currently exist in Wakefield Center.
Thank you. And Aaron, I think you wanted to.
No, I was just going to chime in, Brandon, about the whole commercial district. I think when the state released the, the three A. They came out basically saying it's just multifamily, because they did get a lot of pushback from the planners. Saying, you know, we've done all this work to do mixed-use multifamily districts. And now you're telling us, you know, we should be located around our train, which is near our commercial districts. And then they actually released a few months ago that you know, they would look at mixed-use, you know, multifamily. As part of this now, but then it lowers the number of unit counts, so we could still include commercial, but it would significantly lower. The number of units we could count towards our district, which would ultimately maybe expand our district a little bit. There was just a lot of moving parts, and I think they're honestly still trying to figure it out as well. So we thought this would be, like Jim said, to kind of hone in on that is being able to still use the process that we think has been working well through our zoning board of appeals. And still doing the special permit process. So I just wanted to make note of that, because that did come out. But when they first started this, it, it was just multifamily, so.
The next person I see is Julie. If you could turn your camera on and state where you, your address before you start talking.
Hi, Julie Scott for Central Street in Wakefield. Got a couple of questions for you. As a, as a teacher, I know for a bazillion years, when I first started teaching, we would get, I, I consider what this is is an unfunded mandate. We got unfunded mandates and. Is an unfunded mandate. We got unfunded mandates and I started teaching in Melrose. We would sink, we would we just couldn't fund things ourselves. Um when I taught Beverly, same thing. And after a while, the state started to help fund these mandates. I would love for our elected state officials to help Wakefield deal with the infrastructure strains that this will be causing on Wakefield. We've got some very ancient gas and water lines in some of these areas. We've got, we will have uh a dramatic need for more electrical sources in these areas. Some of those poles are utility poles are very, very old. Some of these neighborhoods are some of the oldest in the community. Um I believe some of the water pipes may be about a hundred years old. We also need to make sure that our police and fire can be funded. Um because this is a in the past ten years, I believe our population has gone up ten percent and that's just in the past ten years. Um the the ball is rolling and rolling and rolling and it's a snowball and it's getting bigger and bigger. We will need some support. I am also concerned, I'm thinking of, um I grew up on the west side, Cedar Street, Emerson. My grandmother lived on Auburn Street. Those streets are so narrow. By going up, building up. Um ladder trucks will have a hard time reaching some of those um top floors. I know um. A little bit off topic, Foundry Street, they can't reach the top two layer levels of the um. The Titanic building on on Foundry Street and that that's a real concern for me. I I wouldn't want to live there for that reason. So um I don't understand why it's a good idea to go beyond what um the state is requiring. I I completely. Agree with Ed Dombrowski and a couple of the other town councilors who had mentioned that. I'm incredibly worried about the forty B status. I want to know how close we are right now to where we need to be with forty B. And how does the metric change when we add? I I think you said seventeen hundred units. How does that change our forty B metric? Because we have to keep in mind that this district that we see on this map with the circle. For the next fifteen, twenty years will not be the only area in town that we're developing. And we're talking about this and we're kind of forgetting that the development will be happening all over the community. We need to keep, we need to have more control of this. I'm concerned, um I haven't heard anything about. People who who take this initiative and follow through with this M B T A initiative. Are they going to be able to apply for variances and could they go even higher? Than what we're proposing tonight, because I I see people getting special permits and variances now. Um I I haven't heard that could somebody go along with this plan and then not try to build more. Uh let's see, I think that's about it. I I would love to have our state leaders involved. I would love to see them at these meetings. I don't think we should be doing a lot of this for free. I'm concerned with what I heard our school superintendent say at a June meeting. We're pretty much maxed out. Um with our schools. So lots of concerns. Um it's it's great to be able to help people. I I believe the need is real, but I I think some communities like us. We've already been doing so much of this. We talk about this. We've been talking this way. For ten years, put living spaces by the by the M B T A line. And we're not getting getting any credit for it, and that's not fair. Some communities haven't haven't been thinking that way. I'd love it if we could split some of this up and and um Greenwood would love some growth, I'm sure. Um are there areas in Greenwood that we could put some of this? It just seems to be such in the dense area of that circle. I'm also concerned about the sightline of the lake. Because this area goes down to West Emerson Street, Cedar, Emerson. If we build high on West Emerson, that will change the sightline of the lake. And I know you guys, the planning board, a couple of years ago had a couple of meetings. I attended as many as I could, talking about planning for future lakeside zoning. One thing Wakefield didn't consider was when we did the Foundry Street building, you can see that building from. The head of the lake, when the leaves are down, you can see that building from Gertrude Spalding Park. You can see that building from areas of Prospect Street. I have a friend on this Zoom meeting. He lives on Frank Street. When the leaves are down. You can see that building from Frank Street. We need to think of sightlines. That matters in Wakefield. Um and I I think that's about it. Thank you for having us tonight. Look forward to the next one.
Yep, so I there's a lot there.
Yeah, I guess. Sorry about that. Actually have more. I'll go easy on you.
Yeah, so I I think a couple of things, you know, just as a reminder for everyone, right? The what we're proposing right now is one overlay district that will allow. Three stories, four units as of right. That is consistent with what is allowable as of right from a height perspective with the existing zoning that exists today. As it relates to. Variances, special permits and other zoning mechanisms, those. This will not prevent or encourage. People for applying for a special permit under our existing zoning as an alternative means of getting a permit. So this will not impact the ability of someone, for example, to get a founder's sheet development. Or something similar permitted. Because they are applying under a different permitting process that already exists and would not be impacted by this proposal.
So Jim, if I could ask then, if somebody were to purchase. Let's I'll be specific. The at the bottom of Prospect Street, we have a laundromat and a a little store. Next to that, we have an auto body shop, Giggly Auto Body. And next to that, we have a small apartment building. If somebody wanted to, I don't believe any of them are on the market now, but this is theoretical. If somebody could purchase those three properties, knock them down and build. This this here doesn't apply to that.
So. I believe that the the per- the properties you're specifically talking about are do fall within this zone. But the only way that this zoning passing or not passing would impact that is if they wanted to build a three-story. Four-unit multifamily as of right. If they want to do anything larger. Then that would be permitted under a separate process on there to the existing Wakefield zoning.
So did I hear at a. A couple of years ago, did I?
So I Julie, I apologize, but I think I'm gonna have to move to some someone else. There's a lot of people who seem like they're starting to raise their hand, so.
I just just don't have to answer this, but just be thinking about it. Did I hear a few years ago? That the height of building in that area I was specifically referring to could be as high as the Foundry Street area.
So. The existing zoning in that area, off the top of my head, I believe limits it to thirty-five feet without a special permit. If there's some other mechanism, then that's something else that's unrelated to what we're talking about tonight. So I'm sorry, I want to keep things moving. Uh I see uh John Sophia. Uh I see you've raised your hand. Um just uh mention your address before you get started.
Um John Sophia, six Whittamore Terrace. Um. Foundry Street is commercial, the the whole section from uh from Albion over to Broadway. Um that was shown in purple, which I believe you you have indicated is commercial, but right now. There you go. Um I mean, right now, that whole that whole area is being developed for um. Uh multi-unit, um I mean. Every day I drive down there, there's something new going up and it's. Uh condos, whatever you want to call it, multifamily, what's what's the exact word for it? Why couldn't that area be included as part of this?
Though the reason why we stayed away from that was because of some of the particular areas of how the law is written. So no matter how big or small a lot is, you can only get credit for four units under the law. And you have to maintain that minimum density of the fifteen units per acre. So that was why, when I referenced the Greenwood lot, the existing lots around Greenwood's station are bigger than the existing lots around Wakefield Station. And so in order to meet that minimum density, you'd have to allow. Six units as of right around Greenwood, based on the lot size. The lots that you're talking about down on Foundry, there's a lot of really big lots. So what ends up happening is that you end up getting a lot of. Square footage for your zoning district without a lot of units that would be allowable as of right. So you it actually works against you, counterintuitively. Does that make sense?
No, doesn't.
Okay. Um so basically.
Is the objective here, uh let me just ask you, is the objective here to put as many units as possible in Wakefield by right? Is that the objective?
So the objective is to meet the requirements as defined by the state law. And so the state law requires a specific density. And so if you propose a district that doesn't meet that density, then it it won't, you won't comply with the state law. So you know, if you add, for example, the Foundry parcels that you're talking about. Are are very large, you know, multiple thousand square feet.
Right.
So the way that the law is written, you can only take credit for four units being allowed as of right, because that law, you have to take it as is. So it makes it that density number goes way down. The district that we drew is only sixteen units per acre. We have to meet a minimum of fifteen. For the four units. So for example, if you took the existing district that we have today and you made it, there was only three units were able to be built as of right. Our density goes down to. Uh in a correct run, it's like twelve something.
So it need to be, so it need to be larger.
Exactly.
Yeah. And something else I wanted to, sorry, just talk about the Foundry Street area and that area was turned around and there was uh many different reasons. Um I think it all started to was we couldn't count the units we've already created there. Uh but also as part of this process, um there's this whole backend of it, which I've been kind of handling it with a consultant in the summer. Where we have um a compliance model, so this is all capacity building. So we're trying to meet that sixteen hundred um seventeen hundred units more. Six more or less sixteen ninety-six. And as part of that, there's a mapping exercise I have to do as well and there's excluded land as part of that. And due to Foundry Street's location, about one-third of it could not be included, that that data could not be included due to it being near um. The near Crystal Lake. Um I've been having conversations with our engineering department to see if that makes sense. But they wouldn't be able to include really like the south end of Foundry Street. Those parcels would not be able to be included in our number, which would. Greater, you know, make that area a lot smaller and we would definitely not meet our our units per acre. So there's more than just. Where can we do it? Uh the state um has.
All right, well, uh let me just, uh let me just say that just generally speaking, I find this. State-sponsored tyranny of overriding the basic freedom of the town to decide how its zoning takes place. To be really repulsive. And I think giving them any more than we absolutely have to is a mistake. That's all.
And I think too, I uh John, and I appreciate your point. I think the reason we were looking at more of this um four-unit, three-story. Um kind of this gentle density, if you will, is because we have seen a number of these developments in town with the four or five stories. Um mixed use and I know, you know, people have um expressed that they'd like to see less of that, so. We thought this would be a good way to kind of meet that middle um middle of the road between the single family and these larger developments. Um to meet the need of folks that may be looking for that type of housing too. So I just wanted to, I think that was something that we chose as a group. Thank you.
Okay, um so I see uh Kristen uh Weekly is raised her hand.
Hi, I'm sorry, I'm probably gonna ask a dumb question, because I signed on a little late, but just to be clear, this isn't gonna make it easier to like. Add like an A D U or anything in Greenwood. It's just for the other station, correct?
So this is only related to Wakefield Station. It is the current proposal has not has does not include any square footage in Greenwood.
Boo, okay. Thank you.
And two ADUs unfortunately can't be count counted toward this, but um something that. Um I'm sure down the road we've been discussing, so not as this group. Yep.
Okay, thank you so much. That that really helpful.
Thank you.
Okay, uh I see uh Frank uh Margarita. I think that's the way he pronounced it. Okay.
Yes, good evening, Frank Margarita, uh thirteen Summer Street. Uh my mother also is at uh forty-two Avon Street. So maybe like the last speaker, uh I mean, I read the paper and um I'm still trying to understand. I don't understand the state law, but. Just living in town my whole life and seeing what's happened over the last. You know, couple of decades with all the um. Uh housing, multi-unit housing. So how does this not? Want to make every developer just buy every house that's a single family and turn it into four family? Is i- am I missing something? I I'm not trying to be super skeptical, but um I mean, this is what we've seen. How houses get bought. On any lot in anywhere in town and they simply go and you know, everybody knows the stories and um. This is not a NIMBY thing. This is called density, quality of life and everything you pay taxes for, so. Could you just explain again, maybe what was the state purpose when we've done all the transportation buildings? That are close to rail lines, we've done all of those forty Bs. You've done all these things and then all of a sudden you just want to say. Hey, go ahead and turn everything into up to four family? Am I am I missing something? Please, I I'm not perfect. I may misunderstand things, but. Uh if you could just kind of explain that again, thank you.
Yeah, so so the state, the when they passed the section three A law, that's a statewide law that impacts any community. That is serviced by or adjacent to the M B T A. So it goes all the way from Boston all the way out to all the the end of the commuter rails. And so what the state did is they passed a law that dictated that any community that's serviced by the M B T A. Has to have a multifamily district that's located within a half mile of that. M B T A infrastructure, you know, a station and has to be multifamily as of right. There's a bunch of math as it relates to how many units and you know, where. All these different requirements, but the way it struck out for Wakefield was the requirements that we're laying out today, but I can definitely tell you that. Other communities around Wakefield, both farther out from Boston and farther into Boston are going through this exact same exercise. Uh and and Aaron, do you want to comment? I know that you you you've been in communication with how some of the adjacent communities are intending on. Complying with this state law.
Yeah, um sure. So I'm part of, and again, I didn't really introduce myself. My name's Erin Coquindon, the Canadian Economic Development Director for the town of Wakefield. Um I sit on a uh a group that um meets once a month of of planners around um our region, Melrose. I'm sorry, not Melrose, Reading, Stonem, uh Lynnfield, and we're all kind of going through the same thing. I would uh say Reading and Stonem. I've had more in-depth conversations with them. Um Stonem did pass something last um. Last year for their their multifamily, which fits in with uh the three A, which they're going to be doing larger density around um by right. Uh along Route twenty-eight. Uh writing, I've been having conversations as well that they need to. They're also a community like Wakefield. Um that they'll be potentially doing around six units. Um so you know, it's really a wide gamut and it really is a a regional effort. I think going back to what um, I'm sorry, I think going back to what Jim was saying earlier, you know, I think don't think this is perfect. I don't. Um you know, I know a few of you have kind of said top-down, uh but we are, you know, trying to do the best that we can with what we're given. Um and I think communities are going about it any different ways.
So I think a couple of things that to pile on to what Aaron said, Frank, is that. This will likely result in the ability for people to have a. You know, buy a lot that's maybe a single family right now and potentially make it so it's a larger. Or has more units than it currently has today. I think that's, but I think that the 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 key takeaway is that. You know, this is not a mandate mandate in terms of. The town has to build this much housing. This is, the town has to have zoning that would allow this much housing. But it'll end up being to the to the market to determine how much actually ends up being delivered. The state's hoping that more houses, housing units are delivered to address the, you know, two hundred thousand unit housing shortage. But it's not like the state's coming and saying you have to build X number of new housing units. You just have to have a zoning that could allow that much, if that makes sense.
So just because they're saying.
Yes and no. Go ahead, Aaron.
Yeah, just because they're saying that the town of Wakefield needs um has to have the capacity to build one thousand six hundred and ninety-six units. It's the capacity point that I just want to hone in on, like Jim was saying, you know, we don't. Just because they're saying sixteen ninety-six, it does not mean that that you know, it could happen twenty years from now. But it doesn't mean that, you know, after this is passed, that all of these developments are going to change to four families or three families. Um and so, you know, I think they're all private properties and if they fit within what we're proposing for to the uh dimensional regulations. Um it could happen, but um it's all about capacity building. Um we're not saying that it's going to exactly happen. These many units are going to be created.
Okay, well, I can tell you that they are. Basically, this is like a forty B. Ram down our throats. Let's just be realistic here. Appreciate you do a lot of good work. But you know, four hundred and eighty units is going to be down at the end of the lake. All of the other apartment buildings that they're building, like the next one next to the K S C. Why don't we do what the town did in fighting its forty B safe habalar and say, look. We're building thousands of units in this town, okay? It takes me twenty minutes to go from my house on Summer Street, less than two miles to get to the highway. Never used to do that. Okay, and that's what the, that's not even necessarily with the train running. But you know, I I guess I want to know how the heck this ever got passed. Because it is going to be a forty B and every developer is salivating. For every property in this district and you'll end up with three to four unit condos on every single family or two family house. I mean, let's, let's be realistic. If you can't see that, there's a problem here. That that's what's gonna happen. I guarantee you. But that's okay. It's my opinion and you can take it any way you want.
Frank, I appreciate your feedback. What I would recommend is to reach out to your local state rep to voice your opinion on this. Um, I I appreciate, you know, you understanding the position we're in. Um, but I think, you know, if you want to talk to them, um, they're the ones that. Ultimately, you know, help make this decision. So I would, I would reach out to them.
No, I I and I and I will. I appreciate that. My one rep is the only one that will probably fight it because I don't, I don't know how you can repeal it. Again, forty B, we had to wait twenty years to build all these units and then. Now we're gonna stop a hundred unit development right down the street from me over on the Hart Street. And I don't even think we're gonna win that one, but it it's very shameful because I don't think that's master planning. I think it's just complete state idiocracy, but I'll leave it there and I'll use my power of the pen, as you said, so. I I'm not sure I have much more to offer, but thank you for listening.
Yeah.
And I appreciate it.
The one thing I'll add to, just for everyone on this call, to the difference between this and. The forty Bs, forty B, you know, can bypass zoning. Here we are going to be creating these districts. Um, is is the zoning. Measure that we're doing. Um, and so um, I just wanted to make that. So that's the difference between what we're doing here in the forty B. Thank you.
So I see, I just want to keep moving along, make sure everyone has the ability to speak who uh wants to. Uh, I see Julie's raised her hand.
Hi, I already spoke once, so I just want to.
Oh, I apologize if you already, yeah, if you already spoke, I'd like to skip the people who haven't spoke yet and then we can.
Can somebody email me this back though? Some of this, like the Church Street area is a national historic register area. Is there um something, some sort of a provision for that? Because I'm not too sure we want development. And something that's registered with the government as a national um historic district. Thank you.
Okay, um, Frank Conti, um, would you like to uh to speak?
Yes, thank you. First of all, thank you for all the hard work that you've put into this very complicated issue. Uh, I just have a question about. How did, how did the seventeen hundred or sixteen ninety six number get determined? And is it feasible, as I'm looking at this map with the blue sections highlighted? That seventeen hundred units can be built there at some point? Um, I I'm I'm confused as to. Where that number's coming from and is it, is that the state's expectation of Wakefield? For this particular area?
Yep, so what I'll do is I'll go back to the, so. For Wakefield, the minimum unit capacity is sixteen ninety six that we have to pass a minimum multifamily district. That has sixteen ninety six units as a capacity. That's from the state. So then if you bear with me.
That that is that existing capa- that.
No, that's. So that we have to pass a a district where if you took every lot within the district. And you made the zoning as of right, that zoning has to accommodate up to sixteen or a minimum of sixteen ninety six. So if you look at those district that we've proposed to date. So yeah, we have proposed a district that if you took every unit on, every housing unit on that district and you brought to zero. It would allow up to two thousand three hundred and fifty five units. For context. You bear with me again, I'll zip over. So the. This district that we have identified, there's an existing sixteen forty one units. So we already have six, one thousand six hundred and forty one units in the district that we've proposed. And if you took every one of those units and you zeroed them out. You know, all the houses went away for whatever reason.
Yeah.
And then you said, what could you build as of right? You could build two thousand three hundred and fifty five as of right.
Okay, and the state would like to see at least seventeen hundred.
Correct.
Okay.
So does it, does that help answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that.
And the, um, I don't know if, I think this was a question too, Frank, that you had is how they got that sixteen ninety six number?
Yes.
So it's um, since we're a commuter rail community, it's the percentage of the total housing units that we currently have. In um, in Wakefield, and so it's fifteen percent of that. So you just do the total housing.
Eleven twen- eleven thousand two hundred sixty one.
Yeah, and so then that's how they they got that number.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, I see Ron uh Ferrara, raise your hand.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much.
I know Tom Miller.
You guys have got a great job. I'm sorry.
I just want Jim to know, I know Tom Miller's had his hand up for a while. I just want, after Ron, I just wanted.
No, I know. Tom, Tom was the first gentleman who spoke, so I'm waiting for, for everyone who's to speak first, the first time before coming back to the second round.
It'll be my wife, sorry.
It's great. Thank you. Okay, uh, just a couple of questions. First of all, thank you very much for your hard work on this. I can, I can definitely see this must been a very difficult task. Uh, I've worked with construction over the years with State of Massachusetts, so I understand the whole planning phase and how difficult it is. Couple of questions I have is, you know, obviously the the density is 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 increasing in in Wakefield. And with all this new uh, density proposals, how's the planning board looking forward for? The uh public safety increase rec- uh needs as well as the schools? Are you somehow gonna pull this into the plan? Because I'm assuming that. Uh, with this density increasing, it's gonna have an effect on all those those utilities. Um, and the other thing too is um. I'm assuming that there'll be a a fair amount of tax increase here because the housing is gonna be much larger than what a single family house would be. So is the housing, is this is tax rate for this new housing areas, is it's gonna be the same as the rest of the, rest of the uh, uh, the town? Thanks, thanks so much. That's all, that's the question I have.
So as it relates to the tax rate, I, my anticipation is that the tax rate will be similar to. This is not proposing on changing the tax rate, you know, and taxes are all on a percentage of the the. Um, assessed value, right?
Right.
So if anything, if you have a single family that becomes something with two or three units and the assessed value goes up. The the tax, overall taxes would be higher theoretically, but in terms of the tax rate. You know, I, and Aaron, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that planning or the. Planning board doesn't have a jur- jurisdiction over that, that would be the town council, but I don't think the town council is envisioning any change to the tax rates based on. Yeah, the zoning or any of the other zoning that's existing on the books. Um, and then as it relates to public safety, I think that the. The the number of units that we're talking about being delivered via this proposal is um. I don't, I don't think that my understanding is that there there's a perceived difference in need in terms of the amount of. Police and fire. If anything, that would be more impacted by the larger developments that the other people have been referencing on the call here. I think going from a one to a two or one to a three family unit, I don't know if this is gonna move the needle enough that it would. Make a difference compared to the Foundry Street or the Top of Lake type of development.
Okay, how about the school system as well? That been, is that being looked at too as well?
So I think the school, the school system is something that there's an ongoing. Evaluation by the school committee and Aaron, I don't know if you have, do you want me to go to that slide and do you have any other color in terms of the school system?
Um, yeah, when it comes to schools, I know that's something that gets brought up a lot of times at the Z V A. Um. You know, I I, Jim, if you could pull up that slide, um, you'll see the numbers of the students um. Enrollment has actually gone down um, since some of these new developments have been uh produced. And so when we're kind of forecasting, that would be a better question for um, the the school committee or the the school department. Um, but just based on data itself, um, you know, it hasn't proven to be quite an issue yet. I know. Some may say differently, but I'm just going back by data that I'm seeing, but that would be a better question too for um, you know, the schools as well.
If I could, if I could just add one more item, just. I I just, I'm not, I'm curious how the playing board looks at traffic studies. Do you, do you take into account? All the improvements in the area and and combine all the traffic studies together to get a full impact on the town?
So to date, we have not done a traffic study of the entirety of the town. I know that's something that has been discussed in in the context of. A, if the town were to undertake a larger planning effort, you know, to rezone. More, for lack of a better term, uh, in terms of on a case by case basis for a specific development, the. Traffic studies that are submitted and typically reviewed by the Z V A to account for, um, you know. The specific development and then a number of intersections out. But if you're talking about like an overall traffic study for the entirety of the town that has not been run in in some time.
Yeah, I would, I would hope you do that because with all the, you know, with all the building we have, I mean, it's it's definitely, I mean, everyone, I think everybody on this, on this uh. This committee as well as the folk calling in that it's obviously we've seen the traffic density increase dramatically in Wakefield. I've been here since since eighty eight and it really has changed quite a bit. I would think it would be a really good uh effort to, and I know it's a lot of work, so I've seen that happen. Is to take all the traffic studies and put them together and see what's, see what's actually happening here. Um, it, someone might be, some of the numbers could be low, some could be high, but it'd be a great idea to just really get a sense of how we're dealing with all this traffic now.
Yeah.
Yeah. Recommend reaching out on the Traffic Advisory Committee. We have a committee in town that deals closely with the Zoning Board of Appeals. It's made up of our town engineer, um. Some police, uh, police, our town administrator, our D P W director and a few other folks. Um, where they kind of analyze traffic impact studies and if you just wanted to let them know based on. Uh, what you said tonight too, um, but I'll be make sure, make sure that I noted as well, but it is something that they've discussed in the past.
Yeah, we'd love to uh talk with them if that's even possible. That would be great.
Okay, yeah, we have a um, uh, if I can maybe try to uh get your email after it, I can follow up with the direct link. Um. You can find my email address online, but it's Erin Kokinda. Um, but you can find their website as well.
I'll do that. And by the way, I do live, I I didn't say my address. I'm at twenty four Morrison Road West.
Oh, thank you. I apologize for for uh for forgetting a reminder.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, so uh, Ms. Miller, uh, I apologize for skipping you so many times. I thought you was your husband who wanted to speak again.
No problem. I, you know, every once in a while I have to give him a chance to talk, so. Uh, my name's Carlana Miller and we live at eighteen Park Ave on the west side. Um, just a a couple of questions and one pertains to one of the slides, which is the one with the red, yes, the red circle with the zones in it.
The blue. Is this the one you're talking about?
Uh.
Yep.
Yes, um, so it shows that in the upper right corner there, that um. Part of the zone that you've proposed is outside the half mile mark. And I guess one, what's the um, impact of that? I mean, to me, that may not count.
So there's, there's specific percentages that of how much of the multifamily district has to be within a half mile. And we validated and this zone is compliant.
Okay, and so one more question. Um, a lot of people have noted that um. The proposal pretty, pretty well um exceeds what the requirement is we have. What's the reason that um, as a. A committee you chose to give the state more is my question. Um, when, you know, we're only required the the seventeen hundred, why would we want to, you know, give them more? The old saying, you give an inch, they'll take a mile. So um, that plays out a lot in life.
Yeah, so I, the reason, the reason why we thought, so. Take a step back. The members of the committee, our fundamental goal was to make sure we're gonna ensure compliance with the state. However. We felt as if it made sense that to have. Density rise in our downtown and downtown adjacent areas, because we felt as if that a. Gentle rise in density, where we've got buildings that are not going to be towering over the existing buildings around in those communities. And would allow additional housing stock to come online where we want it to. Was it advantageous for the long-term growth prospects of the town? We felt as if that the locations that we've identified, to your point, there's some sections that are slightly out outside of that half mile radius. We also viewed that. The commuter rail is a great. Transit tool, but the bus line in some respects almost is better coming down Main Street. And that we wanted to center it around our business district, which has the commuter rail on one side and the bus on Main Street on the other. So we felt as if, if we want as a community to think critically about where do we want to grow over the long term? Because I think everyone, everyone here gets right that we've got a huge housing shortage. So if we're gonna try to figure out what's the best kind of housing in order to make it so we have enough houses to go around. We felt as if instead of trying to make as of right, big, tall. Units, six units or whatever, we felt going from two to four units. With the same height limitations as the existing buildings that are in our communities today. Would be the best way for us to direct development such that we're gonna be able to accommodate the fact that. That the state just doesn't have enough housing. You know, and Wakefield's, Wakefield definitely part of that. You know, if you look at some of the underlying metrics in terms of, you know, the the vacancy in Wakefield. You know, we've got a tight housing market, you know, it's really hard for people to buy here for a whole host of reasons, but availability is one of them. And, you know, I think that a lot of people don't really see. It getting any better, you know, with the house, the state housing crisis is real and it's regional.
Okay, so in light of that, um, we lived in a very urban area at one time. Do you see the business district? Um, developing businesses that stay open after six o'clock? Um, because downtown is fairly a ghost town after dinner's over. Um, what is gonna happen there? Cause I'm, we're talking about housing for people to utilize the transit system.
Yeah.
They're gonna leave all day long and.
You know, I think the, I think the answer. I think the answer is the, the hope is over the long term that. There's enough people in the downtown core that we can support businesses in a manner by. Increasing the foot traffic. I mean, that's, that's the long-term vision is to be able to have more people in the downtown area. So we can, they can patronize business and hopefully, you know, uh, increase the the choices. The options and the quality of the businesses downtown. You know, that's the long-term goal. And I think that. You know, if we're talking about where we want additional housing, we want it near those businesses because we want to support them. We want them to be successful. And so. That's why we really thought that this was, you know, we would have done the same thing around Greenwood candidly if we had the den, if we, you know, the density wasn't an issue because we thought. There's an opportunity around Greenwood where we probably want to encourage more people to be there so we can have more. Businesses that are successful, but that's really the the long-term vision, you know, this, this isn't gonna do it by itself, right? I mean, we're not talking about, you know, that much. We have existing zoning that allow for a building like a tonneau, for example, to become. To get permitted, un- actual permit, but that's discretionary in nature. And we thought that that we wanted to keep that because. It allows the town that level of control for those bigger buildings that are more impactful. And these smaller developments that, you know, may not be as obvious when you're walking around town because it's the same height as all the buildings around it. You know, so it's increasing ge- density in a gentle manner on all the side streets. And then you have the larger buildings that we have that discretionary permit that Z V A could deny them if they propose something that's way out of whack. To, to Aaron's earlier point, forty Bs completely separate and, you know, until we get our housing, you know, our subsidized housing stock up, that's. The the state really limits our ability to control those. So I hope that answers your question, uh, but if if it doesn't, please let me know.
Yeah, and I do have one more. So are these units primarily condos or rentals? Will there be any restrictions on that? Um, are we gonna ask for owner occupancy if somebody comes in and and builds a four unit? Are we gonna ask them to live there? So there's. Some more community connection than just a builder coming in and changing everything?
So. There's, there's limitations in terms of what you can or cannot require for this specific zoning. Uh, right now, as. Uh, right now, as proposed, we are not proposing on making any of those types of requirements as it relates to owner occupancy or age restrictions. And any of those other types of things. As it relates to whether or not it would end up be developing more condos or. Other housing stock options. Honestly, that's one of those things where the zoning will allow it by right and the. You know, people who come in and develop these areas, they'll be, you know, on the basis of what they can make work financially.
Ari, thanks so much.
Thank you. Um, so I think I see, I don't see anyone else with their hand wrapped up, uh. So it looks like Frank raises his hand again. Um, before we pivot to Frank, is anyone else who hasn't spoke? Uh, want to chime in? It looks like uh Lois. Uh, Lois, feel free to uh unmute and. Uh, provide feedback, you know, saying your address first.
Yeah, it's Theo. I'm trying to unmute her, so I don't know if we've lost her or not. Okay, there you are.
Okay, sorry about that. I'm not used to this phone. I just have a question. I keep hearing about that we'll have to pay a penalty. Does anyone know how much the penalty is?
I'm sorry to interrupt. Lois, can you please state your name and your address?
Lois, Nickaton fifty six Main Street.
So if we elect not to comply, there are a number of things that we can identify right now. That in terms of what it would cost the town and there are a couple of things that we can't complete, we can't define. So. We do know that we would be ineligible for Housing Choice Initiative, Local Capital Project Fund, Mass Work Infrastructure Program. We've gotten about three and a half million dollars over the last year from those three programs alone. Additionally, the state earlier this year announced additional fourteen programs. They added to the list. That non-compliant towns would be ineligible to receive. Wakefield specifically, um. There's a uh fifty thousand as well as a two, two million dollar grant that are included in that bucket. Additionally. The Attorney General threatened legal action against towns that are non-compliant, and so it's not clear what the specific penalty would be associated with that, but. Um, I anticipate that you'll, you'll see litigation commenced against compute communities that don't comply.
Okay, does it mandate what you have to do with the money they gave you? The state gives you?
So to be clear, the money that we're talking about, these are grants that you have to apply for. So for example, the town of Wakefield applied for a mass work grant in twenty twenty two to repair North Ave. The North Ave Water Main. That we got two million bucks associated with that. That would be a grant we would be ineligible to apply for going forward in perpetuity.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Um, so anyone else who hasn't spoke before, I pivot to uh people who've already spoke? So in that case, uh, Frank, I'll uh, I'll open it back up to you. Uh, again, please state your name and your address before you start giving feedback.
Yes, uh, Frank Margarita thirteen Summer Street. Uh, so I guess the question, I I appreciate all the information and the other, the other folks that spoke, uh. They had some good comments and questions. Uh, so what, what would be the process? Um, so let's say that the, does the town? Uh, at at a town meeting have to then reject, uh, accept or accept, accept this zoning? In lieu of a Plan B or a Plan C, I, I'm just wondering, um, what, what that, what those steps are aside from. You know, me going to my rep and and trying to help people put it on a ballot and say, can we do something? That doesn't crush us, but that's my opinion, but I just want to know the process. Uh, thank you.
Yep, so, so right now, so I I pulled up the calendar where we're staying right now as a reminder. We, the town started this conversation in uh twenty, in April twenty twenty two. Right now, at the end of twenty twenty three, we've got this proposed district. We're in the process of trying to write the bylaws. This is the first of three public forum. Um, that the planning board is definitely planning on holding. And then we're gonna be planning on incorporating any revisions for all this feedback in advance of a town meeting that we're. That the intent is for the this proposed district or opposed district with revisions based on people's feedback. To then go to town meeting in um. In April of twenty four. We have a backup town meeting in case, for whatever reason, the uh, a district of some sort doesn't pass in November. And then by the end of twenty twenty four, the, if we're not in compliance, that's when we would start having those impacts from the state. Um, as it relates to, you know, the ability for the town, this, the, you know, Wakefield specifically to resist the town. I would encourage anyone who's interested in that to read up. There's some, a lot of documentation or articles that are being written right now. About Milton's efforts to do something similar and their failure to do so in the Boston Globe. Um, as recently as this week, there's, there's a bunch of articles that have been posted on that. To familiarize yourself with that, if that, if that's an avenue you're, you're interested in pursuing.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Ron, you wanna uh open it back up again, state your name and your address before uh, prevent feedback?
Yes, thank you. It's Ron Farrar at twenty four Morrison Road West. Uh, the question that came up when I heard one, the other person talk about the owner occupied and so forth, which I'm not sure if you can actually limit. Some of the housing to be only occupied. But my thinking was that. We do have some real beautiful homes in Wakefield, some that are really just outstanding. So if a home is gonna be, a a development is gonna happen next to another structure.
I'm sorry, Ron, it looks like you've, you've frozen up, uh.
Oh, I froze. Okay, let me try it again. Can you hear me okay now?
Uh, yes, I think so.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, so I asked, I've heard all of it. I was asking if, if, if uh, we have a lot of nice homes in Wakefield. And if the adjoining, a journey adjacent house is gonna be uh built to accommodate this. Will that house uh have the same uh visual appeal as the house next door, so to speak, like a Victorian? Being built next to, you know, next to a developed, being built next to a Victorian.
I think that's.
Tell that.
Yeah, I I think that's all subject to personal preference.
So we're not gonna be having, there's not gonna be any requirement zoning as terms, otherwise if you have a Victorian and you're gonna build a modern next to it, you're gonna, that would be allowed?
That would be allowed, yes.
Uh. Is there any thoughts about that? I mean, was anyone concerned about that or is that not an issue with anybody?
Uh, so, oh, Theo, did you just raise your hand?
Yeah, sorry, I was trying to click the button. Um, so it, it's a really. It's a really valid question. Um, it's something that uh. Isn't really adjudicated, I think, in the zoning in it right now, so um, that, that could still happen. I think um. Uh, I, I do think uh beauty, hopefully beauty tends to prevail, right? Um, because it, it really does uh. Fit in with uh sort of what would be of, of appeal. Um, from, you know, from the existing homeowner's perspective who wants to. Build and and add some density or when they're selling to someone else to develop. That, you know, it's in their market interest to develop something that's uh, that fits in so that you're attracting. Uh, you know, and fitting in within, within the neighborhood context. Um, so I think that's, that's the approach. I also do think that. The way the general density and the capacity building that Jim and Aaron have spoken about really fits with. Uh, the fact that we're continuing the, the height limit of the, the thirty five feet. So that, you know, that, that does prevent a barrier to going bigger or perhaps, uh. I think really uh creating uh an opportunity to do something architecturally dramatically different. Um, so.
Yeah, I, I, I think that, that was an excellent point that you made about making the height a certain limitation. There's no question about that. That was a great idea and I'm glad you went down that road. But it just seems to me that, you know, we have a, the, the character of the town is really special and there are some modern buildings being put up, so. You know, I, I don't really have a, you know, a preference on, on architecture per se, but it would seem to me that, you know, I use, I always go back. In my mind to the town of Nantucket. Where the entire. Was very strict. Something that we may do for, for many years and all of a sudden you've got this modern. Uh, three-story, four-story building going up next to you. I mean, that just really changed the character of the street, so. Just wonder if that'd be something that maybe we should look into. I don't, I don't know, just my thought on that.
Yeah, that's. Yeah, I think it's a valid thought and I think it's something that we can definitely take a look at and see, see what, what. What other people think as we go through the rest of this process.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Um, I'll pivot over to uh, to Frank, um. Go for it.
Yeah, uh, Frank Conti eleven Second Street Precinct Two, um. I, I have to chime in and and agree with some of the participants. Uh, the, the, it's very coercive. I understand what they're trying to do. The, things that don't happen without incentives, but. Those, the, first you had those three grant programs and now they're adding another fourteen programs that you're gonna deprive. A community of, I, I, I just don't think that's fair. Uh, overall, uh, what are some of those fourteen? Do you know?
Be bear with me for a second. I've got a slide for that in the appendix. I just have to find it. And for anyone who's interested, this lot, yeah, there's a slide for, there's a lot of slides, um. For anyone who's interested, uh, this presentation will be available after the present, or after uh, on the planning board's website. If anyone wants to see this with a little bit more, um. Time, I know, but we're zipping through it a lot, so uh, thank you for everyone for your patience, but. The grants you're talking about, community planning grants, Massachusetts Downtown Initiative, Urban Agenda. Rural and Small Development Fund, Brown Field Redevelopment Fund, Site Readiness. Underutilized Properties Program, Collaborative Workspace Program, Real Estate Technical Assistance. Commonwealth Place Programs, Land Use Planning Grants. Local Acquisition for Natural Diversity Grants, Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Grants and Project Grants, so.
And how many, how many of these programs has Wakefield applied to in the past?
So I can speak to that. So um, I um. For my time being here, I've been here three years. Um, some, the Urban Agenda is one that we've already gotten. I've looked into the site readiness that prepares um. Uh, sites for um, development, um, both commercial, uh, residential. Underutilized Properties Program, that would be a program that we apply to bring uh, our cu- cultural building downtown, the upstairs up to uh, compliance with an elevator and things like that. Um, so that's been on my radar, um, as well as um, the Mass Works, which we got two hundred, uh, two million, I'm sorry. Uh, for in twenty twenty two, uh, the municipal vulnerability preparedness uh, planning grant we got as well. So we've gotten um. Four of these grants that I'm reading here on top, including Mass Works, but I've also been in the pipeline to apply for about two or three more of these as well.
Um, okay, thank you very much. O- on the Milton issue, I think that uh. Milton trying to elide this requirement, uh, they were trying to be a little bit too clever by half. They were claiming that. Uh, a trolley wasn't rapid transit or something like that, but that's completely different than what, what we're arguing, some of us are arguing here. Uh, this evening where, you know, some of the concerns are very. Uh. You know, very real based on experience with traffic and and, you know, uh. Preservation of the sightlines to the lake and so forth, uh. I, 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 one has to really take into account what the Attorney General is going to do. Uh, if we, if we don't. Come up with the plan by the end of twenty twenty four. Uh. We know that the state has tried to withhold these uh, fourteen uh, programs plus the three other ones. Has anyone had an inkling of what, what the, what avenue the Attorney General would take? I mean.
Well, the way I would describe that is.
Is you're gonna put, you know, local officials in jail or something? Um.
It's unclear.
This is so coercive that it's, it's really not. A collaborative effort between state and local government. It's like. Yes, you will do this because we say so and, you know, I, I don't disagree with the, the general idea of this plan. It's just. So lopsided and asymmetrical.
Yeah, I, I, to Aaron's or, or point, if, if, you know, if that's how you feel, I encourage you to, to reach out to the state delegation. Um, as it relates to. What the Attorney General will or won't do, you know, I can't say that it's been defined, you know, there's just been. Uh, basically, the Attorney General has said, we will be taking non-compliant communities. And to court and threatening legal action. What that means and what that actually results. Your guess is as good as mine, you know, I, I don't necessarily know what that's gonna, what that would mean. So, and and candidly, town leadership is not, has expressed a, a, a strong desire not to find out. Um, or at least give the opportunity of the town to. To express what they, what they think as it relates to that. Um, in terms of proposing something to the town and allowing the conversation we had at town meeting in order to see what. People at town meeting think.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep, absolutely. Uh, I see uh, someone, Theodore's iPhone. Uh, so please, please uh, state your name and turn the camera on if possible.
Okay, uh. This is um Ted Gaffney. I'm at twenty Morrison Road West. I appreciate all the comments. Um, the one question that I have is it appears that there's, there was some conversation about. Town planning and the density of the housing to benefit downtown. Did you guys give any thought to keeping all of this district between North Avenue and Main Street? Because if that's part of the, 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 you know, the benefit of changing the zoning is to create a more vibrant downtown. Why wouldn't you just start off with limiting the stock? You know, between North Avenue and Main Street, maybe a little bit beyond Main Street so that you take into account. The bus route and the train, but what you're doing is also trying to develop that corridor down Main Street. And and don't let it go over North Ave and the train over towards Cedar Street. Keep it on the other side and just see how much that. Gives you in terms of your quota that you need to, to be compliant and just leave it at that.
So what, I'll respond to that by pulling up. So this is a map that we developed, an alternate map of what I'll call a minimum compliance map. If you just took the zone that you referenced between North and Main Street, you don't get the numbers. Uh, I, I don't recall if you meet the minimum acreage, but at four units. Per lot, you won't meet the numbers. You need a, a area roughly corresponding with what you've got on the map right, on the screen right now. Unless you, you know, significantly increase the density allowable. Um, with that being said, I can't remember if North Ave and tr- in the, between North and Main gets you the minimum acreage, but even beyond that, you'd probably have to. Double or triple uh, the minimum. Or the, sorry, the allowable units, if you just have those units in order to get the, the minimum unit count. So you'd have to, you'd probably be in the eight to ten units per acre. Or sorry, eight to ten units as a right per lot, if you just limited to that section, if you met the minimum acreage, which we just felt was. Would be grossly inappropriate for the, that neighborhood.
Yeah.
Does that help address your question?
Yeah, it, it does, but I, you know, I, I agree with a lot of the callers on the phone where. I think you should just be doing the bare minimum, you know, I mean, I, I think, you know, I appreciate the whole idea of there being. Limited housing or whatever, but, you know, I think Wakefield has done their fair share as people have said with. All of the development that has come on that has really changed the characteristic of the town. So, you know, I don't, I don't think you need to be eager beavers here and try and go beyond what you're, you know, bare minimum here. And in fact, you know, try and. You know, keep it to the, the least amount of, you know, density zoning change as you can because. As people said on the phone, there are gonna be other areas of Wakefield that will continue to develop by their nature. So, you know, the, the, the indent, the, the increase in density here is just one piece of the continued development throughout the whole town. And and the traffic is horrific. You can't even come out of your, our road and it literally, it takes twenty five minutes. And you have to actually push hard to get out because the cars are streaming by and there's no braking it. It's, it's just amazing in the last five years how the traffic has changed on Prospect Street, going down to the lake and going into Stonem. And a lot of cars are cutting through now because the traffic on one twenty eight, due to all the, all the development on one twenty eight. Lot of cars get off and cut through Linfield and then cut through Wakefield to get on, you know, it's, you know, on Stonem, so. Um, it's just, it's just a, a, you know, continual compounding of the, of, of the problem.
Okay, uh, anything else that you, you wanted to, to add?
Nope, that was it.
Okay, uh, in that case, I see Brendan, uh, if you want to. Okay, uh, in that case, I see Brendan, uh, if you want to uh, state your name and uh, and address again, and then feel free to. Do you need to provide feedback?
Yeah, thank you. Brendan LaRosa to Delana Lane. Um, so I, I just had a question, so I, I, you know, with the two examples, I'll say first. I did like the minimum one better than this one with the additional space, but my question was more centered, so. You had mentioned you were gonna increase to four um, houses or four um. You know, four apartments per lot. Is there? Any ability to kind of differ that on different areas? So like, for example, like as you go close to the single-family neighborhoods. Could you have that density be three? Because I think if you go with the four, you're gonna all of a sudden start having variances close to those single-family homes that are gonna, it's gonna. Later on, the zoning will change, so could you um, blend it in a little bit better, change the height requirements as you get further away from the center of town? And change the amount of houses as you get further away from town and still be in compliance kind of with this?
So. Yes, with some caveats. So. As a reminder, we have to have fifteen units per acre to comply with the state law. With four units in the district that we've drawn, we're at sixteen point three for the, the proposed district. You could. Create a, I'll call it, inner district that had a higher density than the four units. Per lot. In order to allow you to have a lower density three unit, so long as the total average over the entirety of the district. Met the fifteen units per acre.
Mm-hmm.
When we, as the working group, met, we felt as if. Less complicated is better. Uh, for something like this, based on the fact that we thought that. Four wasn't a material difference from the existing housing stock in terms of what it's gonna feel like, because we're gonna be able to maintain that. Three stories with a thirty-five feet maximum. And that we thought that if you started trying to do this tiered system, it probably wouldn't be as effective. Uh, from a policy perspective, and that it would create a, the need to have a larger area potentially.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious about that. I just, my biggest worry is just expanding it well beyond kind of the downtown area. I think. That, like the traffic piece, like. The further away you get from the train station, the likelihood that these four units each having cars and then the traffic that's associated with that's gonna be higher. They're not gonna use the train station if it's, you, you know. Over half a mile from the train station, they, they're gonna drive to where they need to go. But thank you for your time. That was kind of just my two questions, so thank you again for your work with us.
No, thank you, thank you for calling in. Um. Do we have anyone else who wants to provide any other level of feedback? Uh, I see, uh, Theo, um.
Um, well, uh, I think, uh, do the Millers, is that?
I, I just, I just had one comment, and thank you for going to this slide, because I've tried, been trying, if I can just take one minute. Um, the allowable, a unit count is much higher than the law requires, however. I think what's more important for the committee to present to help, because I now understand why that number is so high. The allowable units per acre is really what we're targeting, so if we were to, say, drop down to sixteen hundred ninety-six units. You still have a minimum acreage requirement that you have to cover, I believe. And so, so this number, this several hundred more units is basically. Um, you've gotten, if I can summarize, the smallest footprint that you can, that has. If three units are built, no net change on the number of housing units, however, what you're allowing. That could be a question, is you're allowing four units on these lots, and that could drive the actual number up, but it gets you the density. So I think I under, is, is that true?
So, close.
Close.
So, the, for both the, the maps that have been shown today. Three units per lot does not meet the minimum density.
Right.
So the four units is, is related to the density requirement. Candidly, the difference between the two maps that you saw, the, I'll call the minimum map and the proposed map. That is a proposal by the working group on the basis that we think that. You know, for all the words with the state, we think that this zoning district cited in our downtown is a positive for the. Downtown business. To be supported in the long term by having the additional residents, by keeping the housing. Stock that's being added, consistent with what's being built around it by having the three stories. You know, that's a, that's a choice that the working group made, because we thought that there was a benefit. And we also thought it was a benefit to locate that additional housing stock. In the downtown area, adjacent to the commuter rail station, and adjacent to that bus route along Main Street. That was a major consideration. So I don't know if that helps.
It, it does. It does, thank you. Sorry about the last minute chime in, thanks.
No, 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 it's, 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 it said, trust me, as someone who's gone through this. A lot, there's a lot of nuance, and trying to communicate all this nuance in a presentation like this has been very difficult, so. Thank you all for your patience. If we haven't been as clear as we could be. Um, so I don't see anyone else with their hands raised, so I do want to take a, a last minute to allow anyone else who wants to raise their hand. Uh, and provided any additional feedback. This has been great, um, so thank you all for taking your time. Uh, I see Frank, uh, looks like you're um, uh, looking to provide some additional feedback as well.
Uh, yes, sir, just uh, one last question. I guess this was a, a good slide. And it, it explained a lot. Uh, let me just ask, did the committee consider just doing this townwide? Just doing it townwide to see, well, what, I'm just saying, you, you, you know, you put it all in there. You mentioned transportation, I get all that. We've got probably about ten thousand units sitting on the railroad tracks and maybe more coming. Between Broadway and the others, so, let, just again, realistically here. Why not just do it townwide, so we don't put the burden on this one. Area, which is very, very dense, just a thought, and, you know, these questions may come up later, but I. I just had one last one, and I figured.
Oh, no, it's, it's a good one. Um, so there's, there's a. There's a reason in terms of the strict nuts and bolts are required with the state law, in that. Your district has to have, there's a certain percentage of the district that has to be within a half mile of a commuter rail stop. Additionally and separately. You probably would have difficulty unless you went to, and we can run the numbers, and Aaron, we probably should run the numbers. You probably would have to have between three and four units allowable as of right across the entirety of the town to meet that minimum density. Which we thought would be. A lot of pushback. We thought it would be unlikely that people would be amenable to having. Anywhere in town as of right, three units. We thought that that would be unlikely to be. Um, something that people would think would be a good idea. We thought concentrating it in these downtown areas. To have a relative higher density around where we have our business districts and allow the single family. You know, farther out to be as is, would be more successful, but. It's something we can look at for sure, and, and you know, Aaron, maybe we should just run a quick residency in terms of what would happen if we. Put the entirety of the town in the district.
Yeah, I, I would, I would just say that it's, that's a little bit of reverse NIMBY, that says, hey, as long as I'm on. East side or the west side or in another area that's, that's away from this. I don't care. That sounds really fantastic. Do what you want down there. Um, as I say, if I'm gonna inherit my mother's house on Avon Street, you know, you could turn around and say, hey, you're gonna make a lot of money. Um, I really don't care about that. I really care more about the quality and, and the neighborhood and everything else, but. Um, yeah, it, it just seems like, you know, obviously, I, I, I realize more looking at this information, how. Restrictive and the, the state really muscled this in, as other speakers said. Coerced, muscled, so I, I think we won't have a lot of choices, but, and, and. I, I appreciate that you're open and um, you, you've done. You've tried to do a very difficult job, so I'll, I will admittedly say that. I just still feel very. Uh, you know, negative about, about the, the forced, the, the forced effort, but. Okay, no, but uh, thank you. I just wanted to suggest that, because maybe other people might bring it up and. Uh, this might delay fears of a, of a NIMBY fight going at a town meeting. You know, in April. Uh, go ahead, thank you.
No, thank, thank you for, thank you, you know, it's, it's, it's definitely an out-of-the-box solution, so we can take a look at it. So, uh, I don't see anyone else with their hands raised. I do want to just take a second and say, thank you, everyone who, who's called in. You know, I know there's a lot here. Again, this presentation will be available, so people can look at it and digest it more than just me flipping through the slides. Uh, but thank you for taking the time. You know, I think we're really, we're really trying to make sure that we're doing something that. Fits within the character of the town. We've really tried to be intentional about keeping our commercial districts commercial. Locating this where we're gonna be able to be compliant with the state and not impact our ability to get funds, but also do it in a way that's smart. And hopefully will encourage us to have some additional housing stock that won't drastically impact the neighborhood character. You know, and, and obviously, people can disagree with some of the choices we made, and that's completely fine, but um, thank you all for your, for engaging. And talking through this. It's a really thorny issue, and, you know, I think that we heard a lot of, a lot. We're gonna try to take, take a deep breath. Think about a lot of what everyone said and see what we can do in order to try and accommodate uh, any of these changes uh, where appropriate, so. Unless anyone has any other questions, I, I'd like to just turn it back to uh, Theo and uh, turn it back to the balance of the planning board meeting, if uh. Again, unless anyone else has anything else, uh, that's what I'll end doing.
That, that's terrific, and um. I, I wanna echo Jim's thanks to everybody for uh, uh, all of your comments and questions and. Uh, and really chewing on this uh, with us and um, uh. And your appreciation of the, the working group's uh, efforts and uh, yeah, so I, I also wanna thank. Uh, Jim and Aaron and Matt, um. Uh, and all the members of the working group for uh, their efforts and their, their continued efforts. Um, the. Um, and so, we've got uh, at least two more of these public discussions, November fourteenth. And December twelfth, but we want to really have as much uh, thoughtful conversation as we can. With as many of you and uh, as many of your neighbors here in Wakefield, because that's what makes for a really successful. Uh, uh, and productive planning process. Um, and that's exactly what the planning board is for, is to be able to have. These conversations and think about this broader context, and I really appreciate the, all of the things that everybody brought up that. Uh, is interconnected with this kind of effort, um, and, and these kinds of considerations. Um, and this is also just a shameless plug, uh, because a lot of your comments. Um, and this participation is really echoed in Division twenty thirty and in the master planning process. So I think there's a lot of synergy and there is um, a lot of attention that the town is giving to. Traffic and the school's impact and the infrastructure and the, and the character of the town that, that everyone's spoken to, so. Um, yeah, um, and we really do wanna have as much continued. Conversation and participation as possible, so. Uh, please come back and please tell your, your friends and neighbors, you can't ask for a better, a better hour, ninety-minute discussion. Um, uh, on October fourteenth, so um, we'd, we'd really love it, so. We'll, um, we'll, like Jim said, we'll continue this effort and uh, we look forward to the future conversation. The uh, the next item on our agenda tonight is a very simple one. It's item four. Um, items not anticipated by the chair, so I will open it up to the, the other uh, planning board members. Uh, uh, for, for any discussion items that, that you may have. At the, uh, this has been a lot, so, um, and, and, right, it's, it's fantastic, uh, so much appreciated. If there are not, oh yeah, Bill.
Just a quick one. Um, we have our monthly Safe Streets meeting tomorrow evening at seven. If anybody has any comments from the planning board that they'd like me to bring up, whether it's for the bike ped plan or other, um. And safe routes to school, um. Or some of the crossings that, or anything you've heard in difficulty. From other Wakefield residents that they're having trouble with safely navigating our streets, so. Please get that information to me before seven tomorrow, and I can bring it up at our meeting. Um, as you all know, it's not a town sanctioned um, committee. It's something that we started up a bunch of years ago to help. Get our kids to school safely, so, and it's expanded from there. Thanks.
Uh, that's terrific. I, I think the comments today just um, about traffic and about um, accessibility, you know, certainly. Um, dovetail in spirit with the, with safe streets, so, I appreciate it. Um, yeah, Jim.
Not that I want to steal more of the time, the meeting with uh, three A updates, but. The, Aaron and I will be presenting to the ZBA tomorrow, um, with the same presentation we just gave. Um, and getting them up to speed, and then Aaron is reaching out at this time to a number of other boards and uh. Boards in town who may be interested in uh, the presentation, and I'll, I'll make sure I, I'll keep the planning, the balance of the planning board updated. With regards to any, anywhere else we shall be uh, presenting.
Yeah, I, I would just say, John Sophia and myself and others, I think that were on the call tonight. Are also participating in the Open Space and Recreation Plan Working Group, um, and certainly, um. The, a lot of this is tangential to that, so. Um, that's helpful. All right, um. Uh, if there are no other items, um. We will, uh, uh. We, I think we know our, our agenda for the next meeting, um. Uh, and uh, I would uh, be delighted to uh. Uh, take a motion to adjourn. There's no, if there are no other comments from uh, the planning board, Aaron or Susan.
All right.
All right, thank you, Bill. Um, all in favor? Matt?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Um. Uh, again, thank you uh, to the working group and the planning board and everyone tonight on the call, um. Uh, this was really helpful and I'm uh, uh, delighted to have had, had the opportunity, so. Um, see you on the fourteenth.